Let's begin with our utility rate study update.
Leave that. Yeah, yes.
Give me.
You you are.
Kevin, is it Lawrence?
Lawrence.
Lawrence.
Yeah, it's a often he was mispronounced, but I'm used to it. I was Lawrence one time. I've been Lawrence a lot.
And you're welcome to move this way.
Okay, well, I'll probably look back and see why not.
Yeah.
But just to kind of follow up on Kevin Lawrence, and I worked at HCR in Erie, and I've been working with HCR for about thirteen years now. I guess I've been in the industry for about eighteen or nineteen years. Been doing just utility rate studies for HCR for a long time. I had some hand, some some level of participation in the last three rate studies that you guys have not. So that's that's what I'm that's what I will go about. If they were going to just give kind of a general high level overview of how things have been going. So today, we're going to look at each each utility, water, sewer, stormwater, and commercial solace level. What we're looking to do with this in a rate study is to set up the rates so that they are collecting sufficient revenue to be able to operate them in the appropriate manner, making sure that, you know, expenses and capital are for funding profit. We're we're going to look at the rate structure particularly for water. That was one of the things that, you know, I think I heard that they all wanted to always take a look at. We're going to look at the rate structure as far as like how it compared to the industry standards. And develop equitable rates. So. So so today, we're going to look at each rate study and just basically give an overview of where we're at. I don't want to get too into details because there are some moving parts still in play here. Potentially some budget adjustments, potentially some capital adjustments that are going or that have a huge impact on which way things might go. So just be aware of that. And we'll talk about potential different rate structures like and, you know, kind of. I hope we can have a good discussion about what what you guys really want to see as an part of the rate scope. I have like three examples, but those are not set in stone. There's a lot of things that can be moved around and, you know, there are a lot of factors considered like important to Chantel would be revenue stability. On one end, and the other end is the constitution. So global principles for setting rates, rates should be cost based and equitable. Rates should be easily understood by your customers. Rates should be allocated properly. You can formally get when they set the rate setting principles and stable, like I was mentioning with the Chantel wanting stable revenue throughout the year. So what is generally accepted? Generally accepted is the AWA M1 annual, that's the industry standard for water and the WEP MOB 27, as it's called, which is the like the sewer ship. They're very similar, water and sewer, in how they work, especially with the revenue requirement, which is a first analysis, there's three interrelated analysis. The first one that we're really going to focus on today is the revenue requirement. And if you think about a revenue requirement, it's, you know, you might think that it looks kind of like a budget. And in a sense, it is a budget, but it's more like a performance analysis. We integrate the budget into that analysis. They have different purposes, you know. We're looking specifically at the rates now and into the future. We're still likely to do that. We're incorporating cost increases, we're incorporating future capital. Those are the important things about revenue requirement. The next one is the cost of service. So the cost of service is a little bit different, and it's one of those things that especially in Washington. You know, you're not strictly required to follow. You guys are the regulatory body for this utility. So you can kind of choose, you know, what you decide you want to do, whereas in other states, particularly California, there are very strict rules about how things need to be established with that cost of service. So what we do with the cost of service is we are going to take that revenue requirement, that first that first analysis, which tells us how much revenue we need to collect. And then we're going to split it up amongst a different customer class of the service. So how much of the total budget, including capital, needs to come from residential? How much needs to come from commercial, multifamily, and so on? And there's a lot of different factors that go into how that's done, particularly, you know, that's where the difference lies between water, sewer, or storm and solid waste. The next one is the redesign. In theory, you could jump to the redesign part of it. You know, we're looking at everything to make sure that we get into a spot where where customers feel that they're paying their share. But the rate design is essentially taking the revenue requirement, like the overall revenue needs, and then looking at cost of service, that how we might make different adjustments between the different revenue types, root costs of the services, and how we're going to collect it. So for instance, the water, you know, you have your meter charge, and then you have your volume metric rate. So how much should you collect through that volume metric rate versus the fixed rate, which is the meter charge? That's the thing that's considered when we talk about the rating sign. You know, that's, you know, what we'll really get into today, actually. So kind of hit this a lot already, but, you know, determining the the level of rate adjustments, making sure that adequately funded utility, and there are a couple of different things to consider with that. One is the fund balance of each utility. So each utility has its own fund, which, you know, would allow the utility to to absorb the differences in revenues throughout the year, you know, again, getting back to that revenue stability issue. Another piece of it would be something like the debt service coverage ratio. So anytime you issue debt, you know, there might be covenants that say that particularly with bond bond issues, that would be something that would say, you need to have after expenses and any other, you know, normal utility expense, one and a half times or 1.25 times your debt service, annual debt service payment. So that's the important thing that we're watching there. Particularly as you've got that, that's one of the things. For the revenue requirement, I was saying, we're looking into the future. You know, we could look five or 10 years. We're looking at somewhere around 10 years. And the whole point of looking at several years is to be able to anticipate, you know, say, a capital project that's coming up that's going to cost a lot of money. You know, you can start saving now, or you can wait and, and, you know, increase rates in the future. But, you know, like I was saying, would be generally accepted rate setting principles is you don't, you know, you want things to be kind of even from the customer's perspective. You know, increasing rates really all at once is not something that we usually like to, you know, recommend. You know, looking out several years, we can kind of build up to those pieces that we need to deal with. You know, each utility is a business in and of itself. You know, we don't want to have the water rates supplementing the sewerments or the sewers or the or the salt wastes. So I'm not saying there can't be transfers, but usually in those cases, you would set up like the payback of those particular ones. Yes, you had a shortfall in water and you had excess in sewer. So you could, but the idea is that either standalone businesses that should stand on their own and operate like a period. So, you know, hit this quite a bit already, but, you know, we're just comparing the revenues to expenditures. So we're using the most recent budget that you guys have already all seen. We're going to be projecting that that budget into the future using a variety of different escalation factors. You might be like, you might consider like inflationary factors. We know inflation has been going up pretty high in the last couple of years. We're hopeful that it's going to kind of settle down, but that's what we're looking at when we project those expenses. We look at the revenue in a very detailed way. So what we do to kind of make sure that we have a handle on any changes that we might make with a redesign is that we know how many customers you all have, and how much water is being used or sewer or, or, you know, how many square feet on the surface is your stormwater, those sorts of things we need to know. So when we develop those rates, you know, we're going to, we have an accurate way of calculating the needed revenue. You know, the capital funding plan is something that, that, you know, that we're looking very closely at, and it's still a little bit complex, but for the most part, there have been funding sources identified, some grants and a lot of low interest loans. So that's something that I think we're still drafting, ready to handle on, especially when it comes to the level of rates that we're looking at. And one engineering technique that we, for the next couple of years, that we're going to split amongst the utilities. So this is the chart. This is essentially the revenue requirement in visual terms. We have all the different components. The operation and maintenance, which is your day to day, day to day costs, personnel costs, those sorts of things. The orange is the taxes and transfers, so the utility taxes that you pay to the state, but that's what that is. The gray is the capital funding to rates. And that one's probably the least understood part about people who, you know, for people who aren't really super uber into utilities like I am. Essentially, what capital funding to rates is, is it's the amount of revenue that you're generating in any particular year that you're then going to use to fund cap. And it's kind of an important piece because if you have zero, zero capital funding to rates, that means your debt service coverage ratio, like a previous thing mentioned, that we like to see at, you know, 1.25 or something. That means that that's a 1.0. That means there's no extra money after you're paying for your your operating expenses and your taxes. So you can see that gray bar, that's us, you know, trying to add some some revenue to be able to cover ongoing capital. And this is, this is the same for all utilities, but, you know, different numbers. But if you think about capital funding to rates, ultimately, in an ideal world, that would be funding your renewal or replacement. So it's not the things that your, you know, the capacity related projects that you might be looking at doing or, you know, pipelines that are certain different areas. This is, you know, we're replacing the worn out water mains or sewer mains. That's that's what normally, under normal circumstances, what capital fund duration. Now, we're not all in that position to be able to to do that. And frankly, a lot of utilities that I work with aren't able to. It's just something that, you know, it's it's an expensive thing to do. Like, I used to work with city dog and they had, you know, tons of money. And so, you know, they they didn't have a problem. They didn't have to issue debt ever. You know, they could fund everything right out of their rates, and they had, you know, gobs and gobs of money in the bank. But I would say that's like, you know, one in a hundred utilities.
Just for example, our gray, so if you're going to either water or sewer, what's not being borrowed is just like he said, it's fixing things that are breaking, like if the sewer plant or the water plant, a pump goes out. That pump could be 50 grand, but we need that 50 grand in the bank to replace it because we don't want to borrow 50 grand every time we need 50 grand.
I just have a quick question. Have you ever seen a city of our size be able to fund capital through rates?
Like 100% without debt? No?
I mean, not 100%, only a little bit.
Well, to some degree, I mean, you guys are going to be there too. I mean, so, you know, when we talk about the debt service coverage ratio, I said that, you know, there's 1.25 is like the the general bond debt service coverage. And that means that you have 25% more revenue to fund, you know, after you paid your your debt service. And so if you had zero capital funding to rates, that would be 1.0. And so if you have any debt, you probably have some requirement for debt service coverage. Now, a lot of states and federal loan programs are much less than 1.25 because, you know, you know, they're they're not looking for credit worthiness in the same way that a bond issue might might be looking. So in some cases, I think you'd use loads 1.1. But if it was, if there was none of this, you know, frankly, you couldn't operate the utility, you know, without violating those debts or stuff. As the the little dotted line, that represents the revenue based on the rates that are in place today. So as you look at, it's a flat line. If you can kind of see the yellow, how it's it's, you know, increasing and increasing, that's because we're assuming low interest loans. And so, you know, those low interest loans are going to cause you to have additional debt service. And so that's why that's going to look like that is that additional debt service to fund those capital lines. Any other questions on the water side of things?
So remember this graph for water because we're going to talk about this more throughout the presentation. And we're going to need feedback from you because this is an exceptional aggressive. We're going to repair a lot of things that we don't have money for, which turns into raising the rates very quickly and substantially to our users.
Yeah, 2039 year rates will be efficient by 38%. That's that's this big bump right here. By here, so over this, over years, you need to raise in total 38%, not per year, of course, but in total.
So is it appropriate that Bellevue has is so flush with money? I mean, it's almost like a nonprofit at the end of the year. I've never showed zero, but it's like there are people who are overpaying, obviously. There's so much money that's not tied to any sort of capital. Well, maybe it's tied to.
You know, getting back to what I said at first, you know, utilities are regulated. All utilities are regulated. A privately owned utility, it was a for profit utility, regulated by the WTC, the Washington Utility Transcription Commission. And they have to submit basically what I'm doing here, you know, for you guys to the to the commission. And the commission looks it over and says, no, no, we're not allowing you to do this, or this looks good, or whatever. And it's a big, long drawn out process. So in your case, you guys are the utility commission. I mean, they're the city council, so you guys have the responsibility to, you know, determine what rates may or may not be in place. And that's the same for Bellevue. Bellevue, you know, for what it's worth, is a wealthy area. And I mean, you know, a little attention to be placed on the level of rates.
Density plays a huge part.
Right.
So Bellevue, you've got hundreds of thousands of people, but not a lot of infrastructure to to compare, where we have all this wide out infrastructure and only 2,000, 3,000 customers.
Another advantage to building up.
Chantel, when you said this is aggressive, you mean because we're catching up from our 24% leaky pipes and our, you know, all the years that we haven't dealt with our water issues? Is that what you mean?
It is a lot of projects that are built in that are making this go up.
Right, yeah.
And that's why you see something cities that run utilities is it's a capital intensive, you know, venture. So a lot of, you know, private businesses, they don't want to, you know, shell out the money to be able to, you know, to build these systems out. You know, and it's a monopoly. You guys have the monopoly on on these utilities. So, you know, the one thing I'll say about Bellevue, just in defense of, you know, how they do things, is just simply they have a long range plan going out 50 years. And they're saying, you know, over this 50 year period, we're going to replace this much pipe. They're saying, you know, the average pipe that's 50 year useful life, we're going to replace it in 50 years. So, you know, they they're really looking forward.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, big cities, small city, rural, that's all, it's everybody's thinking, should be thinking the same thing. I think we're a pretty savvy town, city. It's just like you, like you said early on, the flexibility that we have of, we can, we we are doing that, and we have clay pipes and we have infrastructure we probably, we're looking at, and I can't speak to 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago with the city, but it's one of those things that the chickens will come home to roost eventually, things break down. And so when you don't ask for it, then to your point, all of a sudden, we're like, sorry, guys, everybody's getting a 25% increase this year. So it's 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 20 years ago, it's not, it's happening now. So it's a, it's a, it's a challenging conversation because the stuff, we have been looking at it, I know definitely have the past recent years with the city of Leavenworth, and we have a lot of old infrastructure. So it's, we're like, if people caught holding the bag, when it's like, sorry, it's it's going to have to go up, right?
That's the key I see is Bellevue started planning 50 years ago.
Right.
Well, Leavenworth started planning 10 years ago. It should have been planning 70 years ago.
And that's really common, you know, a lot of utilities, water, sewer, you know, they were funded through, you know, federal programs, you know, 50, you know, 70 years ago. So, you know, nobody was really chomping at the bit to say, here's our brand new system. Now let's start increasing rates the way that we should and make sure that in the future we we have the funds available to replace the system as engaged well.
Well, that's, I'm going to let you get on with it, sorry. And you maybe answer this, when you talk about the flexibility that we do have, maybe that in California, other companies don't, agencies don't have, is with the commercial and residential and getting more revenue from a commercial, they're taxing the wastewater especially, right? With the breweries and that are, I hear that so often, right, that it taxed our system. You know, is there flexibility and who gets charged what rate?
And you're speaking exactly to that cost of service component. And so, you know, just to kind of jump ahead a little bit and, you know, so for sewer, you know, it's not like water where a gallon is a gallon necessarily. Sewer has different strengths that you allude to, right? Your breweries produce a lot of what's called a biochemical oxygen demand or suspended solids or nitrogen or phosphorus, all those different things. So we know that it's more expensive to serve those folks. And so in the cost of service, what we're doing is we're saying, well, let's split up the utilities expenses in a way that reflects the the cost to serve those brewers. So let's say, we know that we have to build the wastewater treatment plant to be able to handle phosphors, right? Isn't that right? So, well, if they're the major contributor to the wastewater system is from their from their wastewater is from the phosphors, then, you know, they should pay for it, you know, and so their rates would reflect that. So that's that's a component that we're still kind of working on, but that's exactly what we're looking at.
Travis, when we first, our first house here in 1972, you could take a shower or a bath and a nail would drop out or something, and it was found that there were wooden water mains still on Burt Street. And so they, you know, they they took care of all that. But I wanted to ask Chantel, what are our two biggest things that we see that we'll be having to take care of that maybe the most costly things?
We don't have that data in this presentation tonight, but it is the six year CIP, ICIP that Andy has been working on.
Okay.
And so Kevin received that initial one from us, and he has used that to build in all the capital for all of the utilities tonight. Now, for you guys, at the end of the day, you're going to see a percent total, how much it's going to cost if we want to do all of that. But if you say no, we need you to hold the line on increases. We can't afford to do an 11% increase. We want you to stay at 4%. Kevin, Andy, and I go back to the drawing board and we look at all that capital, we go, all right, we have to spread it out. We can't do it this aggressively. That's what I meant by this is aggressive, and it's got all of our wishes and wants in there. So we can cut back, but we need that direction from you.
Thanks. What's wrapped into the taxes and transfers expenditure?
Like, there's a state utility act that you guys have to date that Washington State, that's in there.
Yeah, excise taxes, and then RBA and other tax that we transfer to our general fund.
Which is, which is very common in Washington, in a lot of states where, you know, they may charge, I think, usually it's around 5% to 6%.
Yeah.
It could be as high as 10%, some other use talents.
Yeah.
It's similar to like the electric utilities, they can be as high as 5% by use of our, our.
Yeah. And we also have transfers, and those go to the ER and our funds, so equipment. You've got your back, those are your dump trucks, all these pieces of equipment that the guys need to rip up the roads, fix the pipelines, all that kind of stuff. And also you have the central service transfer, which goes to basically City Hall that covers all of the annual costs for audits, annual reporting, IT, just everything that all departments benefit from. All the city fund have transfers that go into the central service fund for. Those are, those are small overall. I mean, your blue line is your operations and maintenance of those actual locations.
Or for a lot of utilities that are just funding that blue line.
What?
The, or it's like they're very basic costs, they're not funding anything else. Like I said, you know, the cost you're experiencing today, it may have been a result of things that happened in the past. It can have a lot to do with, you know, your your growth in this area. You guys are experiencing a little bit higher than most of the utilities I work with. So that's something to consider, and that's a huge component and particularly the SDC part of this of this discussion.
Does this chart include all different classes of service?
Yes.
Okay.
So this red, this orange line, that that's a residential, multifamily, commercial. That's basically the three that we have.
The details of all of this data will come to you later, but like you said, we're still working with it, but this is your summary.
So the one thing we didn't want to do was show up in November or whatever and suddenly go, look, this is what we've done. And this is what, you know, this is what we want you to adopt. We want this to be an open discussion. And so you guys can walk into this with clear eyes and understand, you know, what you're voting for, and this is your opportunity to, you know, give your say of like how things should pan out. Because, you know, you represent, you're you're here as the utility commission, like I said, but you're also here to represent your constituents. So, you know, that's the other side of things where, you know, nobody likes to see, you know, generated reasons that people don't like aim. I'm creating reasons. And so, you know, that those are the two opposing forces.
I have a quick question. Chantel, when was the last time a study like this was done or when was the last time?
Six years ago.
Six years?
Yeah, so we, HTR has done the last two full six year ones, plus we did an interim one on the garbage after COVID. And so this is our third, I believe, with HTR.
I think this would be the fourth, actually.
The fourth one.
Yeah.
If you excluded the garbage, so for all three, yeah.
Typically, we do this every six years.
Every six years, yeah.
And that varies by utility. Some people, you know, I work with some that do it every single year. But I'm not suggesting you guys do that either.
It's a lot of time and money.
These are, but those are like the, you know, the, you know, 60 million dollar water utilities, you know, which have a lot of issues and lots of debt, something getting stuck. So I would not suggest that for you guys. But I do suggest, you know, that, you know, you do this every once in a while, just to kind of, you know, reset things. And like we were talking about before, the cost of service, sometimes things change in usage patterns, and we need to adjust the different customers relative to the total adjustment.
And affordable housing, if you lived in an affordable house, would you say, wait? And if affordable housing, if you lived in an affordable house, would you say, wait. Would you fit into the same place as everybody else does as far as what you pay for water and what you pay for sewer?
There is a low.
He gets all of our rates, he gets every class, and this is all built in here. And no, the, the afford, not, not affordable housing, we have a senior discount, senior disabled discount. And a very low discount, so we have with water, three different rates. There's the normal that most people pay, then there is senior disabled, and then there's like. There's another word for it, it's hardship, and, and you're talking about people who are making less than like fifteen thousand dollars a year in income. Yeah, we don't have a lot of customers in those classes.
I was just pointing you, we built like a hundred affordable houses, for example. If they would fit, then their water bill would be the same as mine.
You guys could choose to make a rate for affordable housing, but that's, that's typically not how we've handled it in the past. Um, it would be like, like the mayor is wanting to do, he wants to help bill the affordable housing. And then those folks would pay normal rates based on their income levels, whether they were senior or hardship or not.
Thanks. What, what is his comments to waive the connection fees or affordable units?
Right.
For the builder?
Yeah, right, which lowers the purchase price for them.
As well as what?
It, it lowers the purchase price for the buyer.
Yeah, that, that's, that's one of those things that's actually a little bit controversial, but, yeah, um. The one thing I've seen in my time is that a lot of people that probably could, um, get a lower income through whatever program any city has. Um, a lot of folks, it, it's underutilized, you know, um, so. You know, if that's a concern, you know, that's one thing to consider, is, you know, figuring out a way to. Um, you know, advertise that you have this available, you know, be very clear about those apartments and something. But, yeah, usually it's pretty underutilized. Um, so, this is the sewer side of things, um, looks very similar to, to that this huge bump. Uh, the one difference here is that we have a bigger gray area. And the reason why we have that bigger gray area is currently as we have, I had assumed in the analysis. We're assuming that there are less low interest loans out there to be had, if I'm right. So, but again, these are preliminary, you know, I'm sure, you know, we can hopefully maybe find some other. You know, um, program for low interest loans perhaps, but, you know, the clotting of low interest loans, we still have to pay the net service. Um, plans are great if you can get them, of course, it's free money. We've got a little back, um, again, similar to the thirty eight percent, we're looking at the fifty eight percent. Over, you know, through twenty twenty nine. So, again, this is something that's. Um, you know, probably gonna be the biggest issue is the water and sewer, um, grade adjustments. So, of course, those are your biggest components of all your utility bills, so, unfortunately, that's. Again, revenue requirement is very similar between all the utilities, you have your, your operating operations, maybe your practices and transfers. Capital funding the rates in your debt service, and again, with the, the dash line, that's. Another new at current rate levels, if we did nothing, that's what.
Can I ask a quick question? Do you often work with cities where you see, I think you had fifty eight percent increase in that short of a period? Is that, would that be common that you'd see cities like that, or are we in a specially uncomfortable position?
Well, you know, without going into rate level in detail, fifty eight percent over five years, that's, you know, around ten percent per year, right?
Yeah.
So, um, it's not uncommon, and in fact, you know, there are a lot of things in the works right now with like, um. Water quality, um, requirements, E P A stuff, you know, there's the. P F O S thing, so many utilities are reaching rates at a much higher level than, you know, like inflation, like. Even though you have your, you know, your organ is, you know, subject to those inflationary costs, on top of that, you have these additional requirements. For additional treatment standards, like you guys had with the phosphors, and you know, that next one that's coming out there, that P F O S stuff. Which is those braver chemicals that, you know.
Did we raise our rates for the, the system we have now that we just implemented? To pay for that, that was, that was the last re, what was the last rate increase?
Are you talking about sewer in particular?
Sewer, yeah, the.
So what we did was we timed it with the original build debt coming off of line, being paid off.
Yeah.
With the new debt coming online. Yes, we still raised rates, we did hold sewer rates the last two years. Because we had such a large reserve sitting, and we didn't want to, plus. You were raising rates on water and garbage and still water at the same time. So the overall rate increase to your community has been somewhere between four and six percent every year. On, on totally.
Yeah.
That's kind of been our, our average.
So do you plan, do we, do you plan that out? Every, we're, we're, we're going with every six years, but it's like, you're like, this is our six year plan, we're gonna raise rates, four percent each year to, to meet this goal of.
Let's, let's let him get further through, cause I think he's gonna talk a little bit near the end about the. Where we're at, at the percentage levels.
Okay.
Yeah, cause these, these right here are telling you, you didn't raise rates at all. This is the problem you would have.
Sure, water, it's pretty good though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very great, um, solid waste, we're kind of seeing the same thing, where we seem to be doing well. That means in the, in, you know, in the past, you've raised rates sufficiently to be able to. You know, cover those costs, and, you know, we're not looking at some, you know, big rate adjustments there. Um. Here's my look at things, so this is all of them, so, you know, this water, sewer, salt, uh, salt water. Solid waste all stacked up in these different blocks. And, and again, the original is that if we did nothing with the rates helping to pan out. Um, you know, there is, you know, very little growth in there because the growth relative to. Inflation is pretty small, even though you guys do have some good, you know, people and housing and so on. Uh, but in total, you know, over that, through twenty twenty nine, it's a forty percent test.
Which is eight percent for you.
And again, very preliminary, these, you know, um, you know. If you were to say that, you know, Frank, like, and I've had this happen, where, you, you know, people say, well, we're just not doing that. You need to go back to the drawing board, that's what we're here to talk about. So, to consider it on a residential bill, this is, it doesn't include, I'm, I'm solid waste, obviously, cause that's just commercial, but for this, there's a, there's a, those. You gotta see how it pans out here. And, and like Chantel said, you know, in total, for this residential, nine percent per year. You have a question, somebody there?
What's the, yeah, I do, can you flip back for just a second? Um, what is the money going down the left side represent, a monthly payment?
Yeah, so, um, in twenty twenty four, the, the average person, you know, the water user or sewer user. You know, they're paying roughly a hundred and fifty dollars. Some water, some water that's really driving the base.
So.
So by, I don't have the, like, twenty four, twenty five, I think, at least. Um, by twenty thirty two.
It's a dumb question.
Pretty rarely, because, I mean, at the very least, you're, you're subject to regular inflationary costs increase, right? You know, your, your staff is gonna, you know, have some, you know, cost to be adjusted, perhaps. Uh, the chemicals that you use at your treatment plants, it's gonna be increased, um, you know, in the last. You know, three years, inflation's been exceptionally high compared to previously, so inflation generally, the Fed part is two point oh. Uh, but we were up in the eight percent for a while, uh, so, you know, if you can imagine, that's, um. That's what we generally, um, recommend if you're, if, let's say you're doing a rate study period, but if you don't wanna do a rate study. We recommend, you know, do a, do a, a C P I adjustment, just to keep up with that.
Did you create a chart also for commercial bill impacts?
I did not in this one, um, for future ones, we can talk about that, it's a little bit more complicated because. You know, there's a wide range of types of commercial customers. Um, you know, cause this is like saying, you know, the average residential user, you know, it's using, you know, six thousand gallons or whatever. Uh, it's a lot harder to figure that out for, for commercial, but sometimes what we do is we'll say, okay, well, if you have a two inch meter. You're probably gonna use this amount of water, so that's something that, you know, we usually, you know, produce as a time as well.
We know now, though, how much each business uses, or don't we?
Sure we do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, that's the other big difference between this rate study and previous rate studies is all of the, um. A M I infrastructure is in place, we know very precisely how much everybody uses, so. Um, in the past, there was a little bit of guesswork involved, and, and now we know very specifically how much everybody's, so. That's very helpful when it comes to that cost of service, um, type of analysis that we're, that we're, that we're working on.
Is this residential bill, uh, chart, based on the. Uh, base, um, monthly usage?
Yes.
Like the seventy five hundred gallons?
We, we, we do have other topics tonight, so I just wanna keep us on time here. We're planning to be done at six thirty, and he's about halfway through the slides.
So, we'll jump ahead to the system development fees, um, we talked a little bit about them, but essentially what they are is that with the one time fee. That you charge for new construction, or possibly if you're, um, you know. A landowner that's, you know, increasing the size of your meter, or you're gonna, you know, go from residential to commercial or something like that. We would then charge this one time charge to, um, pay for capacity essentially, that's what this is all about, is capacity, so. Um, you know, growth pays for growth, that's something like a common, you know, mantra that's often said. And, you know, the whole point of this is to try to keep the residential folks that are already there, you know. I, you know, insulated from, you know, big growth that might be happening, so, you know. Uh, do not have to expand your, your system, uh, and pay for it through rates. Instead, you're making the people that are causing that growth to pay. Um, this chart kind of shows that there's like two parts to the system development charge. And again, like I said, it's all about capacity or growth. So, when you think about it, there's two pieces, there's a reimbursement component, which is like going this way. You can, you know, now, so it's like, okay, we built all this capacity. Um, ahead of, you know, the growth, so we know that, you know, in your current system, you might have. You know, enough capacity to serve a thousand people, perhaps, I'm making these numbers up, but. Imagine that, so, but these people, the people that, you know, are in these, these past years have paid for that for those years. So, the idea is, you're getting the people paying the S D C, but is reimbursing the people for what was already built. So that's the past, and then there's the future piece, and this is the one that's a little bit more in flux right now, um. But, you know. If you're, if you're a new, uh, customer, you know, you might, there might not be enough capacity certain. So what's gonna happen next, you know, uh, well, you're gonna, in the three S D C, pay for this additional capacity going forward. So, the big distinction that has to be made here is that. A lot of your capital projects really are capacity related, that's the thing that we still kind of need to work out. But, um, it's like, you're gonna dig up a, a water line or sewer line and just replace it with the same size. That's not really capacity increasing. So, it wouldn't be relevant to this whole chart. So, cause if you can imagine how this calculation works. Is we say, okay, well, we know how much capacity you have, then we convert it into a E R U or equivalent residential unit. So imagine your average home. And then we say, well, they use this amount of water, and here's, and then the water system, it can, can handle this much capacity, and then we just divide through. And then, um, that's what we do, that's the visor, the numerator is the, is the cost of the system. So we're just essentially trying to back into how much it would cost for this past, um, capacity. Now, the future is similar, except for we're saying, okay, well, how much more capacity? To, to be able to find all this new capital projects that are gonna expand the capacity. How's that work?
I don't get it, but let me ask you a question, see if I can get it a little better, um. Can you do like a story problem, so, for instance, um, we have a big. We have a big development going in on the chump stick, let's say it's a, I think it's a four hundred something unit, someone can help me with this. Are those people gonna have to pay more for utilities? You're not saying that, are you?
This is that one time charge, so, that's being built, each house is gonna have to pay. Uh, an S D C charge, which they pay once, and that covers this past capacity that's already built. That's the reimbursement side, and then there's what's called the, it, the improvement side, so.
In our budget, we call it water taps and sewer taps.
Well, okay.
Every unit pays this tap fee.
Okay, I do get it now, but, like, that's all rentals, so, just, just to help me understand.
For one time, whether it's a rental or a home, you're buying into the existing system. Yeah.
Oh, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Sometimes, you know, when you assign the rentals, there's some issue with when that fee is collected. Some, sometimes people, you know, um, want to do it later, so that, that it's not coming out of the developer's pocket, it's coming out of the homeowner's pocket. That's, that's a whole issue which.
Yeah, okay, I get it now.
Yeah, that, that project has been over almost nine hundred thousand dollars, just for the water connection.
So, just to kind of take it one step further, let's assume that your, your current system has enough capacity to handle all those new units. They're only paying for the system that's built today. And the capacity that, that has been built to be able, that, that it's available to serve them. And that, and so currently, if we look at, at these numbers, these are very raw numbers, so. So, like, write them down and expect them to be the same, um. These numbers are assuming that not, there's not a lot of. C I P projects that are expansion like buses. And so that's why, you know, there's a little bit of a decline here. Um, you did a lot of work on your sewer systems, that's why there's the increase here.
Excuse me, in fact, the icicle transmission main. Is a capacity thing.
That's, that's what, that's what we need to work that out.
That's sort of your.
Yeah, so, I mean, it could be that, you know, that negative number turns into a zero or something, depending on. You know, how that all works out, but, you know, that's the thing that, you know, really, um, Andy's gonna have to deal with is to establish. You know, how much more capacity is being, being, uh, included. So, in some cases, you know, you might have a eight inch main, you're gonna increase it to a twelve inch main. Well, you know, how do you establish how much difference? Uh, yeah, but, you know, obviously it'll work that way, right? Uh, so determining how much additional capacity been, been, um, increased by increasing from eight to twelve, or whatever the case is. That's the thing that we still need to work. Oh, great design, um. Again, this is kind of like the culmination of the other analysis, the, the, uh, rate, uh. Revenue requirement and cost of service, so at this point, we're going through and saying, okay, well, how are we actually gonna collect this money? How much is it gonna be from the meter charge, how much is, how much is it gonna be through the volume extra charge? Uh, are we gonna change the different tier sizes, you know, are we gonna, you know, um, increase the. Water charge higher relative to the meter charge? So, this is where you currently have the water, and we're really only talking about changes to the water system. Uh, so you have that seventy five hundred, um. Gallons, I think it is, included in your rates for your discharge, so regardless of how much you use, you're paying for that. You know, say you use one thousand gallons, you're still paying for that amount. Uh, and that's kind of a question. Uh, and that's kind of the question is, you know, is that really what you wanna do? Um, you guys do have the unique situation, um, in kind of a resorty town. Um, you know, you have a lot of homes that are. Empty for a great deal of of the of the year, then. It gets complicated because you still had to build the capacity in your system to serve. Doesn't matter how much they're actually using. They had they had a three quarter inch meter, which increases capacity needs if your water system. You still have to come right at that level. It's not it's not like. You can go back and say, well, we know this is this house is gonna be, uh, you know, seasonally used. You have to assume that's it's used full time. So um. That's that's kind of the reason why people have this type of rates like you have is because. You're trying to e- establish um, the capacity that's been built. It's separate from the actual water being used. Cause there is the two components. There's like how much it costs to actually treat the water. Like um, on a marginal basis. And then there's the cost to, you know, build the system. So that's the question. Um. This is the options that I've worked up and I. I don't expect these to be the final ones. Um, I put them kind of like in order of magnitude as far as conservation based type rates. And that goes opposite from um, what might be um. Revenue stable. So up here is the most revenue stable. Down here is the least revenue stable. Uh, option one is say, okay, well, let's just take that seventy five hundred and turn it into its year. So now every every gallon is being paid for as it's being used, but. There's that issue with the seasonal folks, right? So, you know. Maybe that's not what you wanna do, but again, if you're a little bit more observation based, I've shown you here's a little bit. Here you can see you'll come, you know, from seventy five to five thousand. And I I have looked very closely at, you know, your individual residential water suction. And so. What's hidden in there is that seasonal component. So, you know, I've seen like seventy seven percent of the winter consumption. You know, it's covered under this five thousand gallon year. But you know, look at summer, it's thirty five. So you can see, um. You know, in summertime, you 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 know, you're gonna need people to use more water, you know, there's seventy four percent of summer. It's being, you know, uh, new stuff to that. And again, even more conservation based than for three thousand, six thousand, twelve thousand. And this is like very, very close and tied to what is assumed to be um. Your winter water average. And the idea behind the winter water average is that. Uh, you're trying to isolate the water consumption that's being used indoors versus outdoors. Because outdoors is a very, uh, you know, questionable, um, unnecessary. Potentially uh, amount of water being used, you know, having green lawns is is a luxury. And so you wanna have a green lawn, a lot of cities are saying, well, you're gonna pay. So that's kind of what we're talking about here is we're giving the. Consumption data that I that I've looked at, it looks like in the winter, it's about three thousand gallons per per uh, per household.
I think your next slide is. Really telling. Because what's happening, so we're taking those three, we've put them in here with option one, two and three. And so that top piece, the three quarter inch meter charge, that's the base rate, right?
Correct.
So if you choose option one, two or three, you can see that the base rate goes down slightly. And then down below is the usage, and that's where usage has to go up to keep us stable. So does that help explain that that previous slide from a dollar standpoint?
Yeah, but what percentage? What percentage is, if you go back to the other slide or reading this one, what percentage is tier one? What percentage of this is tier two? What percentage of the? Of the dollars brought into the city each month? Is tier one? What percentage is tier two? And?
Well, I don't have it broken up by tiers, but this is maybe, well, this is not not so much as this one.
But if you're looking at that and you think. People using over twenty five thousand, I mean, it should be, is our is our rate? Um. Tiered up, elevated up from tier one to four, as you use more, you're paying more. Well, is those people, you know, I'm sure that's one more, that's why it comes into play is how what percentage of, you know, we this pool of money of a hundred percent, right? Which percentage of each of these tiers? How's it broken up? How's the pie sliced?
Uh, I don't have that with me. I have something I can look at.
But it's an evaluation when you look at the dollars though, right? Well, you can you can play you can play with that model and then manipulate those dollars here and there and say, okay, the people that are spending or that are using over twenty five thousand gallons. There are actually more of them than we thought. And if we increase their rate by this much, it alleviates some pressure with people that now using as much. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's exactly kind of the whole idea of everything is that you go towards.
You want me to take that? Do I need to do the presentation?
So this kind of gives you an idea of how that works from the dollar perspective. You can see the blue, that's your fixed charge. That's that's all of. Um, that meter charge. And only this little bit of orange is how much you're collecting from actual water consumption. So there's not a lot in.
Okay, but that's the seventy, zero to seventy five hundred is the blue. Is that what you're saying for the purple?
No, the blue is the meter charge. I mean, yes, yes, it is. Yeah, that's where it gets a little bit confusing. For this one, yes, it includes that seventy five, but um. Then if you look at this one, where we just shift it to the actual tier, so you can see the very similar. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is that a great. Large percentage of your revenue is being generated from that meter charge. And not the variable charge.
Because we have forty percent of our our houses are unoccupied.
That's. That's probably the reason why you have that, you that, you know, years ago, you went to that seventy five hundred.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah.
But you know.
Also, people just aren't using what seventy five hundred gallons of water.
Yeah.
That's that's kind of the downside is they want people to. Um, nature away like, oh no. You want people to pay for the water that they use. And you might have like some some people that are here year round that lose a lot. They're still paying for that seventy five hundred gallons. So is that is that a technical way to do it? I guess my point is it's kind of that. You know. That's one thing that, like, if we go back to here. That's something that we can talk about is to say, okay, well, maybe. You know, we keep this here that's included in the fixed charge. But we make it a little bit smaller. You know, that's not, I don't have that necessarily as a as a. You know, example here, but the idea is that, you know, let's just let's just move things around and say instead of. Um. You know, this being seventy five hundred in this year, you make it five thousand or something. So we're using it so that um. The impact to people who use less water is a little bit less. But that's the one thing to consider with all of this discussion again, is revenue stability versus conservation.
Yeah.
You know, and I I hear a lot of people, a lot of you guys talking seems to be more, you know. You know, more about equity than necessarily conservation. I don't know, that's just what I'm kind of hearing.
So I I I would throw out though that we are closely watched by, we get our water from the icicle. And there's an icicle work group. That strongly is looking for the city to go conservatively. Because. There's limited water out there that's being divided up by a lot of entities. And so. One of the things they're looking at or from us is to go more strongly to the conservation side. And I happen to agree with that.
And so, well, and that's where things are complicated with this, because you have several different. Factors that you wanna consider. But all of them are are open. So there's a need to kind of, you know, drill down to what's really important. And, you know, you know, we could. You know, put together a multi decision objective analysis type of thing so that you guys can kind of, you know, individually rate. How you feel about different things. Um. Although we can just talk through it like this, um.
Are the big users? Paying a fair amount?
So this this is only relevant to um, residential. So.
Yeah.
Just consider it like big users being exposed and just use a lot of water. Those families that use a lot of water, they. You know.
Or are they, how are they not paying for it?
They're paying for it.
Okay.
But I guess I guess the point of the the seventy five hundred. It's contained within the fixed charge. Um. It's not good for the people not using a lot of water. But it's good for the for the fact that you have to build all that capacity to be seasonal.
Yeah. Well, before that seventy five hundred, it was fifteen thousand. So they cut it in half.
Right, and we did that because we did this analysis. And when they did, what was the average? Water use per household per month? It came out to be seventy five hundred. So we weren't encouraging conservation by giving away fifteen thousand with the base rate. So we. We actually ended up, I believe, lowering the base rates a little bit and we created. The usage rates uh, starting at seventy five hundred instead of fifteen thousand. And what this is, this is optioning is yes, you can lower your base rate a little bit. If you want to increase the tiers and start charging from zero. Right? That's what option three is. We start charging from zero. There is no. Water use allowed in the base rate.
I thought they were all charging.
No, option three starts at.
Well, I mean, option one.
One, two, and three started at sixty five, ninety three, and one ten.
And our current is zero.
So they're all paying. Per gallon.
Correct, yes, all three scenarios, but it gets more and more.
It's more aggressive than as you go, because then the the top tier is the highest in number three and it kicks in the soonest. Now, my question is, so are all of these saying? They're a way to get this, they'll get the same amount of revenue?
Correct.
Right.
That's that's exactly the the that that's the reason why, you know, having that AMI data is so important.
Right, but the but the wild card is, how much does option three drive down usage?
That's called elasticity of demand. Yeah, that's something also that has to consider. Um.
Cause I've heard of, oh yeah, water systems that did the aggressive and. And fell short because people did conserve enough that it drove their revenue down.
Right.
And and that's that's definitely uh, hard to estimate.
Right.
Um. But it's something that we would factor in with all this, you know, we would assume that there is a reduction because that's the whole point of it, right? So, you know, there are a lot of ways to.
Play in here, Kevin. Our time has passed and and you do have other topics. Um, if if you. Tell me, Mary, do you wanna keep on this topic longer or do we need to reschedule another? Follow up?
Everybody had your presentation or packet, just wondering if anybody has any additional questions for Kevin at this time.
Now, this is gonna be an ongoing.
I mean, we were on the last two slides, so we were there, but we obviously. Your guys' input to drive what we do.
How long before we make a decision about it? November?
We have a little bit.
Yeah, Andy's gotta get her feet deep into the CIP of this.
Yeah.
And uh, analyze all the loans. And grant potentials that have been embedded, because he's he's driven off of what we've given him.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that's kind of where we're at is for Andy to look deeper into it. Um, he's got the bulk of the work built. So once we know what direction we're going. He doesn't have to spend that much time. Manipulating those numbers and then we come back to you.
I just wish that. We had everybody here or Zoom on this council that could ask questions right now. And we're we're gonna do it another time. You know, I want to type his time to come back a second time.
Yeah, I'm gonna encourage our missing folks to watch this on Zoom so that they get all this background, because this is.
Good.
Highly important for you guys.
Yeah, so yeah, without that, with that said, I mean, coming back, I think there's another study session that we should have.
And we were thinking of the second one with you guys with them.
Okay.
But we just needed a little thought from you today. Do you want us to go? Conservative?
I gotta sit on that one.
Don't know yet.
So. You know, like I said, these are those three options for, I don't have it up right now, but anyway. You know, another idea that's something that'd be done is to say, well, let's just leave the fixed charge as it is today. And then for the increase in rates that we might be looking at, say it's ten percent, we just load that into the volume rate. And so the fixed charge means to say the volume rate increases, that's more cons- on conservation.
From the last time that we we you guys established that seventy five. Hundred was the number. If that if that's changed a whole lot, I think that's a good baseline indicator.
I would say that it has changed.
Oh.
And, you know, things have been changing pretty rapidly in the water industry. Generally, people are using less water, you you know, even just five years ago. Um, buying out and and of course, we didn't highlight it in my data last time, so we have more accurate data now. Um.
I think that that's gonna weigh heavily on the direction that we go. If we're gonna be picking one of these options or modifying them in some sort of way, obviously, we need a built in. Capital improvement projects um, into how this all flushes out with regard to the modifications that we need to make. But I think a lot of it's also gonna have to do with. You know, how has human behavior changed since we last established our fixed rate at seventy five hundred gallons? Where where is people's consumption now? That's what I was leaning towards, and I think it also encourages people to use less water. Um, but I but I think that this needs to be more of a data driven. Decision, um, and it would be really great to kind of see some of that.
I I have a lot more. Data behind all this, but I didn't wanna. Didn't wanna.
We have one hour.
Are these are these tier rate figures, are they based on? Thousand gallons?
Yes, yeah, for a thousand.
So in option one, people would pay sixty five cents per thousand gallons used.
Up to seventy five hundred gallons. So after, it's it's just like your your tax rate, you know. Pay you ten percent with your first. Twelve thousand dollars earnings, it's kind of the same thing with with the water. It's like more use. You get into that next bucket and pay that higher amount.
So essentially a meter rate of just under seventy five dollars a month plus about five dollars a month per water usage.
With this level, yeah.
Yep.
But it really lowers that. Per thousand for that first.
Which actually is not an increase though compared to the seventy seven thirty six that they have paid today.
It's a difference of like a dollar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a couple bucks.
But the bigger bigger increases come for those heavier users, which. I think it's the direction we gotta go.
I personally like option two. But that's just my general sense right now based off the information that we have.
Can you put the options up there?
Our biggest users are the schools and the city in that order, is that correct?
But they're not, they're not, they're not.
So is there a separate meter school rate? I didn't realize that. We have a different school rate?
No, it's just that you're trying to get.
This is just residential.
Residential.
Well, waters by meter size.
Yeah, so so.
So we're just like a free.
So residential often has these different tier sizes, whereas commercial customers often don't have tier sizes. Because, you know, um, who's to say that a brewery uses? You know, how much water they use is efficient relative to an office building. So you you know, having different tiers for different. Customer, commercial types is very difficult.
Oh, we should have it.
We do have it.
Okay.
But they're low.
Yeah, they're too low.
They are low.
They're too low. And that's where we need, I think, to make the movement, not with residents.
So look at commercial in particular, which we can do. And we'll have Kevin give us an idea of what is our total revenue from residential versus commercial so that we know those percentages. Because I know that's very important. We also need to look at those same percentages for sewer. What's the impact from commercial versus residential? Uh, those things are all details in the study. They just aren't in the presentation.
Yeah, well, whether the um, businesses are. Are paying too little.
Yeah. So. Sixty four percent of the revenue is coming from residential right now. Drops.
And, you know, the cost of service piece, which you will see, most will kind of give you a a an idea of. What, you know. That equitability of the rates as they currently are, but like you're kind of leading. The equitability of the rates as they currently are, but like you're kind of leaning to, you don't have to follow that and watching it in state necessarily. It's a little bit tricky, there are some legal things going on out there, but it's important.
I didn't see in here where you made any sort of comparison for overall water usage and broke it down between residential and, and commercial uses. Do you, do you have that information?
Yeah, I, I.
Cause that might help us kind of flush out where the, where the rates should land and where the gallon usage should land.
I have a separate.
Residential and commercial.
Presentation that I kind of showed the, in, you know, the city staff. I did, I could show that, I could send that to you guys and, you know, you'll see a lot more detail about how water.
Isn't that valuable for us to get the bigger pic, the bigger complete picture as? Commercial heavy is kind of our city is.
Yeah.
Just be quiet, we're just talking about residential tonight.
Tonight?
That's, that's not fair, I mean, I, I know that, I understand that, but.
But what I knew was most all of you, there's only a couple that have been on a study before. So we wanted this to be very high level to give you what is a rate study, how does it work? And then we went into what the residential was, because residential is the bulk of our system.
Fifty-five percent.
Yes. Yeah, it may not be the bulk of the use, but they are the bulk of the infrastructure.
And up till now, I think that, you know, at least my understanding was the focus was on the structure for residential. I don't know that we really talked too much about, you know, how much should be the commercial uh. Consumption versus that, that meter rate. We hadn't really talked much about that, so.
Is there a possibility that, yeah, I mean, I, maybe I've just, I, I don't, we don't wanna do anything unethical, but understanding. It's all, in my head, it's like a big pot, it's a big waterworks department, right, and that covers residential and that covers commercial. And I understand that there are more residences using more pipes than a hotel or a brewery. And understanding wastewater versus regular water, and so I, I just. We, we look at the overall city itself and the residents. In our city, and, and their business owners are residents as well, right? Some, it's, it's, it's one big pot and we're all sharing this one point five square miles, and so why is it fair to? Look at this overall and say commercial, although they're not, they should pay a portion of this waterworks department? Or is that not fair? Well, ethical, or I mean, there's legal is fair, there's, well, you know.
Well, the other side of all of this is affordability. And that's where things are especially nowadays. Um, going towards is the consideration for affordability for residential customers. And so, um. Certain states like California, a little bit Utah, they're not, they don't have the flexibility to consider, um. You know, um. Equity as some way considered with affordability, right? Generally speaking, uh, the, the measure, the whole measure that everybody always uses is two percent of, of your household income. Should cover your water, or should be, you know, it's affordable if it's less than two percent for water and the end for sewer, not combined, so four percent total. So, and I think the last time I looked, you guys were under that, so for affordability, see. You guys look like you're okay, but you know, that's a, that's a very, you know, pretty dirty way of putting it. So affordability, another issue to all of us.
Well, again, I think, I think the, the. What we're trying to do here though is just say, hey, we're looking at some big decisions coming down. And it's not covering everything yet, it's not giving you, but it's giving you a glimpse of what's to come. And we'll get more of that and deal with it as we go and get more of that background, so.
We got you thinking.
I love that it's super data-backed too, and it really means, really, okay.
Also, I'll try to clean up the internal, uh, uh, PowerPoint slides that I had for the city. And you, we can distribute, see a lot more of that built, uh, in the assumption.
Great.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
This is a very complicated topic, so I feel bad that we have to talk a lot about it. But I also wanted you starting now because I want you to be comfortable come December when you're passing rates. We've got quite a few months still for us to play with this and find.
Okay, we're down to fifteen minutes. How's your, yeah, how's the social media?
It'll take longer to settle.
It's great, no, yeah, we're gonna be super quick tonight.
Karen's on it.
Um, so basically, with all the changes that have been happening around our social media, this is the new post. Drive social media policy that I'm putting before the council today. So I don't need any action from you tonight, I would just love to give you that opportunity to see it, review it. This will really help me when I. A very clear, precise, um, uh, policy and how moderate.
Uh, I had a question on the, uh, right of appeal, so. And they said, upon receipt of an appeal, our attorney will determine, does that mean? If there's an appeal, we will be paying our attorney to review the appeal?
And we actually use, uh, our attorney's. So that, and that's only, and that's only if the attorney, you know, tried to comment.
How often does that happen? Do you know, like?
Very, I think I've done it even once or twice.
Okay.
But this policy will give you very good practice, so this way, this'll, our other one wasn't as obvious as this issue, so this will go a lot more clear, so. This is a better guideline. Great question.
I have one more question.
Of course.
Uh, we determined that a social media account maintained in the name of one of the, our government officials is a government account. Does that mean that our personal accounts are government accounts?
I love that you brought this question. So, we will actually be updating the policy for elected officials in regards to social media. So, and that's if, let's say, we had a social media account that was Shane Bay or Councilmember of the City of Leavenworth. That would become a city official account, and that would actually put under our heart of pride because it would be subject to public records because you would be operating.
As long as my account doesn't say city council or anything like that.
So yeah, and so that's something I'll touch on with the city council at a later date, it's a whole more being on our internal with our staff, it's a very. It can get really tricky, so we're gonna save that, so we're actually gonna pull that from our special and we'll have that. We'll have a separate date where we can dive into more of it and create. Great question.
Cool, thank you, Karen.
Well, if you have no other questions, you have maybe not to do, but I'll let you get on to it.
Thorough and quick. Request for annexation, yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. We have a formal request for annexation. This process starts with the, the city council just generally acknowledging that the request came in. And if you would like me to process it, uh, staff does recommend processing it. It is for one parcel of land, the first parcel of land off of Marsen Drive and Mill Street. And right now, the city limits go directly in front of it, so it just leave that one parcel in. It's multifamily and I think you'd like to get connected to city water and sewer and develop a few more. Dwelling, that's then. If you guys are generally okay with the concept, we will go out for noticing, we'll have a. Opportunity for public comment, there'll be a public hearing and then they'll be requesting action with the city council to annex it into the city.
Well, I went out there last night trying to find Marsen Drive number one.
Yeah, yeah, very small sign.
Somebody walking along the street out there, uh, had directed me. So when you drive into the Marsen Drive where it says, you know, you're all gonna be trespassing, whatever, if you drive on there. Um, is it the piece of property that's flat to your left as you drive up Marsen Drive?
No, it's on the right, it'd be on the right as you drive.
Houses and, or there's property, oh.
Yes, it's partially developed already.
Yeah.
Okay, I was looking for, I guess, a flat piece, because.
It's that first house on the right.
Well, where is Marsen Drive then? Show me.
To south of that.
Is it that right there?
Is Marsen Drive where, um, Chester Marler and Finkley, is that Marsen Drive?
Yes, well, Marsen Drive.
And Tascadia lives there in her property.
On this side of it or on that side?
On this side, this, this Marsen, Marsen is on the bottom side.
But that, and that puts that on the left, how does it put it on the right? Cause you're turning off with this. This is the street line, street.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's his cabin.
It's, yeah, on my, my parents' house, and then they're talking about this. There is a house on here, but there.
On your right.
I never noticed that.
Okay, I'd have to go back and look, because this is not flat property, this is houses.
And there are houses there.
Okay, and what do they want if, they, they want to be in the city, they wanna be in the city.
Okay, so.
Already, it's in our UGA, but it's not in the city limits. This is the city limit right here that goes up.
Yeah, so by letting me the OP today to.
Yeah, and I went up there.
Process it does not.
They want it to do that whole piece of property and put it in the city. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Real picture always works.
Yeah.
Did you already say why, why they requested it?
They would like to add more dwellings there, cause it's own multifamily.
Uh, and they want city.
City water and sewer and processing through the city.
Okay.
So, I support that. General consent, everybody okay, moving out one forward?
Yeah.
I would fit it to there's any time, I just wanted to know what.
Um, I'm still, do you have time or?
Yes, we have time.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, this time is devoted to talking a little bit about the development agreement. Between the City of Leavenworth and Leavenworth Meadows, I'll, I'll see, that's where they're doing the three hundred and sixty-eight apartment buildings. As we talked about a couple meetings back when we did the, um, temporary construction easement. They are building out a, a new road to enter into their new development. This agreement effectively walks through what the expectations are for the phase one of that road, which is the first half. Or less than half, but to their entrance, and the second portion of that road. Where utilities will be placed and some grading will take place in that phase two as well. Uh, so that will provide an opportunity, should we need to use it for emergency services before the city finishes the development, we can. So, the developer has been very gracious in expanding the scope of the work to help ensure that it's somewhat accessible to us. The whole corridor, if need be. With that, the bulk of the work is with Public Works and our engineer, the developer who is here today, representing the developer. And their engineer, and they have been meeting almost every other week for. Three and a half months now, working through the details, which will become all the attachments to this draft document with what comes before you in a public hearing. And take public testimony and then require action. Maybe, do I, did anything mark to that?
I think you did a pretty good job summarizing it, but essentially, like Willa said, this phase one, as it's shown, and I'm, I'm not confident if that ended up. Giving to you as in the.
I, I emailed it to you.
Yeah.
She was basically building out a third of the road in phase one. Probably not that portion, and then the utilities and rough grade, the second portion. But none of the retaining walls will go in on phase one? Uh, phase one, yes, not. Oh, they will? So phase one will be the complete build out of phase one. Uh, and then phase two is some retaining walls. Uh, for the phase two section? No, sorry. Phase one will build out phase one, retaining walls and phase two, huh, so. Yeah.
Will their portion of the road include a bike path?
It will, uh, it's a multi-use path, yeah.
Okay.
The continuation of the one that's already, well, there's already one there.
Yeah, it'll intersect at a ninety-degree angle, so you can connect on the base path that uses the.
And this is not the road that goes right alongside Rattlesnake Hill?
It will be.
Oh, it will be, okay.
Did we establish where that road's gonna dump out onto, it would seem like the one photo, like it was up here, and then another one's gonna come down here, the rattling?
Yeah, it's gonna tie in across the road, so.
That's right, yeah, I mean, okay.
We might as well have a dummy, um, but, but Josh as well would like to do that.
Okay, that makes sense, cool.
How many buildings are on there? Looks like a city.
Oh, fifteen buildings? Local carport?
Yeah, fifteen buildings plus the clubhouse, and then a lot of smaller carport structures.
And so are we building, this is the city building, the road from?
From where?
From, um, Trumpstick?
They're building from.
They're building all that in, and then we take over though at some point, or are they going all the way to Titus?
No, we take over just past the entrance of their development. However, I think it's worth noting that the developer is putting in infrastructure all the way across. And they are doing some final, some grading of that entire stretch, so that'll be natural to the city. But two-thirds of the road, the final construction will be with the city. And that final two-thirds does include some wetland area, so we'll definitely be getting some mitigation and work with that as, as we're ready to develop that portion.
So, so when you're talking about public works, are they, have they been working out there now or what?
Oh, sorry, just to clarify, what Willa is meaning by that is this will be on the city roadway, so it's primarily a public works concern. It's not that our crews are in any way working.
Oh, that's, that's right.
Yeah.
And so we will be hiring people to do this.
Well, yeah, this will be a future, the, the, the phase two will be a future build out that, yeah, we'll have a contractor, so.
This is already on our transportation improvement, um, plan.
Yeah, I just had never seen it, like, like, I looked at this, the one you sent today that I'm looking right now, I thought, e gads. I thought there were gonna be like three buildings out there. That people live, you know, that you rented out.
It's very similar to the Leavenworth House project, how many buildings are out there?
Uh, I think there was, yeah, a pile, I think.
Five total.
But they, it doesn't look like this.
No, this will be, and it might appear bigger too, because it's kind of spread out a little differently. And the developer also, this is townhomes here, this is to kind of. Help the city, that was at the request of the city, they added the townhomes, it's outside their normal.
Affordable townhomes?
Well, no, it's just not get ready, but it's a different type of housing model, and it'll, it'll support fam, more families as the idea, so.
To whose property is along the right side, is that Rudy Prey? Right, well, I'm looking at the thing, Trumpstick is here. Yes. And who's this here?
Like, yeah.
Okay, yes. Yeah, project five is right there, okay. When does this start or is it already started?
They can start some of the initial grading work, uh, now, cause we have the temporary, uh. Construction easement. Yeah, we're, we've been trying to hold off on getting this to the city council until the exhibits are all ready to go with it. You know, they're probably ninety-eight percent of the way there, so they're just doing a few more tweaks. Uh, I won't be here to finish this project unfortunately, so I, I definitely want you to know that the kind of work's gone into it. We're very close to being finished. Hopefully, there's no questions from the city council as you go into the hearing. Andy's perfectly, uh, capable of handling those questions, but I was hoping that. If you have questions about the concept or what the development agreement is, we have the whole team here to answer questions tonight.
I'd like to walk it with somebody.
I'll go too, cause I'm, I, I'd understand it better.
Yeah, yeah, it might, it might be a little bit challenging to walk, but we could do a guided tour or something, yeah.
Are you saying for me?
Yeah, it's not graded right now, so it's not like we could just go off of it, but we could absolutely go take a look at it, yeah.
Do some kind of, I, I, I am better if I see something.
Yeah.
Okay.
You said something about mitigating.
Wetlands.
Yeah. Down by the road.
Yeah, by Titus and the new road.
Up just behind.
Yeah, like, yeah.
We're gonna have to wrap up, so we can. Hold our regular meeting. It's really. Two minute, right?
If you have questions, email, we'll then send out the right people.
Two minutes.
Make it three.
I'm gonna get three. I am calling to order the meeting of the Leavenworth City Council for July twenty-third. Um, will you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Dallas?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Yeah?
Anna Sperger.
Shane Fair.
Rona Baron.
Travis McMaster.
Okay, we would entertain a motion to excuse uh Clint Strand, who is ill, and uh Zeke Reister, who is out of town.
Still moved?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Shane, seconded by Ian, all those in favor? Let me see your hands. Pass unanimously. All right, the consent agenda. We have one item to add, and that's due number eleven. To give authorization to the closing document signing, we need that for the title company. Uh, when we get to that, I have a slight uh, you were handed um a motion to make, but we got a slight change to that as well, but I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I have some questions.
Okay. You're surprising me.
I am.
Oh, stop it, Carl.
Okay, page two on accounts payable, annual maintenance fee permit tracks. For Bitco.
Yeah, that's our permit tracking system that we use, our online permit portal. People are submitting through there their applications. We also started, if you don't recall, this a couple of months ago. They can now pay online. So it's a great opportunity for the community to see what's happening in their area, but also for people doing stuff to submit applications to process them.
How often we pay this sixteen thousand nine, well, basically seventeen thousand dollars?
Once a year.
Once a year. And Bitco, does that that uh, you don't use money thing?
It's nothing to do with Bitcoin.
Bitcoin.
That's a Bitcoin, it's also, all right.
Sister, I'm old.
Much more reliable.
You're old. Okay, and on page four, uh, down to the bottom removable bulliard, bulliard, I can't pronounce.
Ballard.
Ballard, six inch, whatever, um.
It's years ago.
What, what was, what is that?
Those are the ballards for Front Street?
And so it's, okay, I just wanted to make sure that's what it was. Okay, and on the bottom of page five, um, big title, LCC. The, oh, that's where, that's the car wash thing that we're paying. And the balance due, we've not paid them anything?
We paid, we paid twenty five thousand dollar earnest money.
Or to begin with, and okay. And on page seven, says credit taking twice for foul, foul, Fowler Company. What was that?
Uh, yeah, Chief Fowler is a supply company that we buy parts from. Repair parts.
Do we pay twice?
No, it's a separate charge.
We took credit twice is what happens in our system.
Oh, this, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, because we paid too much?
Our finance department got a credit.
Mm-hmm.
And we took it twice in a payment request to them, so we actually should have only taken it once on one week, but not.
All right, on page twelve, parking for ticket window, what is that?
So um parking ordered this prior to us getting authorization from the council to acquire a car wash. What this was is uh, there was a time when people would come to city hall to dispute or pay a parking ticket. Uh, we decided that it was the parking team who is responsible for issuing the tickets. They're most knowledgeable. Makes more sense for them to be handling this disputes and um so what we've moved them down to the, what we refer to as the opt shop down uh over Public Works. This was going to be a service window for them, so they didn't have to open up and allow people into their office, but they could serve them from, they could stay on the outside, and they have a secure window for them to service people um, from the inside. We're now going to take that and reuse that window. We're not gonna install it in the current facility. We're gonna wait and see if the car wash property will work for them, and if so, that's what we would install that.
This is from very, it's just the desk.
Oh, this is just the desk? I thought it was the parking for ticket window.
Right.
This isn't the window?
But it's from very.
Oh.
Which is furniture.
I thought this was the window. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm mistaken.
Okay, so what is it?
The window previous.
Well, the desk, right.
It's over three grand.
It's just an adjustable desk.
A stand up desk, sorry.
Oh, yeah, a desk, okay.
Good explanation.
The ticket window? Okay, on page fourteen, USDA grant Ski Hill Lodge, Winton Manufacturing.
So Winton is using the grant, the USDA grant.
Mm-hmm.
And they are going out and providing things to different companies. The Ski Hill Lodge one, they gave them Slim Jim bags.
Which are the the constant brown bag and it's like that green too, that's what those are.
And so they're submitting to us the expenses for that, and I'm gonna turn it around and submit that to the grantor and get reimbursed.
Okay. Um best tall compo- no, yeah.
Yep. That's empty.
Wait, no, not that one. USDA grant Lake Wenatchee RV Resort. Is that bags again, the same thing?
Same thing, both bags.
Okay, and then utility account refund sold home.
So Mrs. Zimmerman, she moved, and they did not clean that up in the cell of the home. And so we are refunding her her final payment because the new owner is paying.
Okay. And I go fast here. No, that's it. Thanks.
I I have one thing on the consent agenda. Are you done, Sharon?
Yeah.
The professional services agreement from Loadstar Strategic.
Mm-hmm.
Um what, what, who is it and and what is it? I'm reading it here and I.
So we we engage with uh Loadstar, they're a lobbying firm.
Yeah.
And uh, we engaged with them a year ago, so this is re-upping their contract.
Oh.
To go to Olympia um and lobby, they they arrange meetings with uh legislators um and try to get what's like our guest, our agenda passed.
Who is the person?
Blake Baldwin.
J C's son?
Yep. He's the main person.
He's the main one.
Yeah, as I recall, as I recall, it was like forty thousand or something once too.
Thirty, thirty thousand.
Okay, and is it the same thing this year?
It's the same thing.
And around, around the same issues?
Um, and we we might expand those issues to look at some of the other projects we have that we might look for some capital funding and stuff for too. So it's not, it's doesn't uh they'll, they'll work for for us on what issues we give them, so they can be different as well, but but the housing will still continue. But that will be one. Can we see a list monthly or bimonthly of what's, what he's doing?
We do issue, we we include monthly reports in your packet.
He hasn't been giving them.
Well, you know, because we dial them back.
We dial back for.
At the end of the, end of this session.
Session, so we're now gearing back up, so. Okay, so I I kind of like to know what he's doing. Yeah, we just started, he and I had our meeting with Representative Steele on Monday. That's kind of the first go around. So. And that was for for about housing? Um, yeah, housing um issues among other things, but yeah, broadly housing issues. Okay, I think we should know what's going on. Sure. Uh, the questions. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved?
Second.
As amended.
Jay, seconded. Rona. All in favor? Let me see your hands. Pass unanimously. All right. Comments from the public on how it is not on the agenda? See the public online or do you?
Um, no, online, we have Maggie and we have our reporter Taylor.
Yeah. That's it, okay. Any public? All right, seeing them, we'll move on. You've got presentations and we have corporate way?
No, we don't.
We don't. Okay, Mike. Welcome.
Hello. How's everybody doing? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so just kind of, we've been continuing on uh with all the fuels work we've been doing along the Chum Stick. Uh, they've been working right around where our station two is at uh, at Christiansen Camp Twelve Road. Uh, they should get about another three quarters of a mile uh out of that project. Uh, and that's, we're just gonna keep chipping away at it, uh, getting as much done as we can every year. Uh, we already submitted our next proposal uh to the D N R. Uh, they fund a lot of chipping and outreach funds for us, uh. And they're, we're kind of double our efforts next year. Uh, we've kind of continuously run the chipping program throughout the summer uh to kind of meet people's needs with getting rid of some of that biomass, and uh we just want to continue that and then do more outreach and try to get it up into some of the canyons and stuff that we haven't uh we haven't knocked on doors, we haven't assessed homes and triaged them. Uh, so that's, that's gonna fund that work, and they've already uh told us it should be fine. A lot of people are out on fires right now uh at the D N R, so uh we haven't got the contract back yet. Uh, but we continue to receive that and other grant funding through uh federal grants, state grants. Uh, we're already planning projects into the summer of twenty twenty six. Uh, the biggest thing being those egress pa- egress paths and then uh some defensible space work around homes. Uh, we're trying to on private property uh do some of those landscape improvements uh and tie in with what the Forest Service is gonna be doing over the next uh five to ten years on the Chum Stick to L P. So it's uh, it's a kind of a large scale coordinated effort that uh we're a small part of, but uh the private parcels uh ends up kind of falling to the fire district. Uh, as far as training, we're still kind of focused on uh our wildland and rescue stuff. That's kind of most what we're getting right now. Uh, we've had a lot of our command staff uh go to Wenatchee, go to other fire districts, uh mutual aid uh to help get some of that on the job leadership training, uh incident management stuff uh so that they can advance. Uh, so far, we've run three hundred and seventy eight calls. Actually, I have the updated number, so we've run four hundred and eleven so far this year. Uh, only down from four nineteen last year, so we're kind of catching last year's number and we'll probably pass it. Uh, there's just been a lot of people in town. Uh, we had a couple of days where we got eight, nine calls. Uh, so those, you know, as as you bring people into town, you have more incidents. Uh, and of course, right around July fourth, we had just a ton of calls, not just in this district, but uh kind of all over. Uh this District Six, and then we even went down to Wenatchee. Uh, like I said in the next line, we had those multiple brush fires. Uh, most of them were actually the next morning. Uh, they started about one, one o'clock in the morning for us. Uh, we had one up the Chums, they had one in Pashastin, one up the Chum Stick. Uh, and then I went with a brush truck to Wenatchee for the Balsam Root Fire. Uh, and we were there until about three o'clock the next day. Uh, fireworks caused the fire up the Chum Stick, we believe. Uh, and I believe they confirmed that they did start the fire uh at Horse Lake Road. Uh, we do have two personnel uh with one of our brush trucks up on the Pioneer Fire in Shalane. Uh, they've been up there since the ninth. We just swapped a crew out, so it's a new group of people, but the rig will remain up there. And uh, since Marcus Wells did his fourteen days as strike team leader, uh, we have him back now. And that's where we're at now. It's been a busy summer, but we're hanging in there.
Mike, where was the call that came over, you know, our wristwatch, our phones today for wildfire evacuation?
That was a test.
Test.
Yeah, so they did a test and uh we filled in a lot of calls afterwards. I'm not sure if that was intended to be sent out at that moment or or what happened, but uh, yeah, they didn't necessarily, normally we would want to start something like that with like test, 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 test. Uh, and there was, it caused quite a bit of confusion, but they were just trying to test the system and test whether they could send that link out and uh, but there's, it's not related to anything. It was just a test.
Okay.
We immediately.
After swimming lessons, I was taking a shower at the pool, and I didn't know if I was supposed to run out bare naked or what.
We had, apparently it caused a bit of a minor panic at the K O A, but uh, it all went out.
Thanks, Mike. All right, any other questions, Mike?
Yeah, that's.
Any other questions? Nope. Thanks a lot. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, our first action item. Is the, we're not getting a report from animal control?
There's one in the.
I know, but like it said, seventy two uh phone calls received. I wondered if that was in the city limits or do I just assume everything is?
Those are in the city.
Okay.
Or for me.
It'd be nice to know kind of what the calls are, that the the most calls come for what?
Well, I can ask them if they want to come on a quarterly basis.
There are, do we resume or something? Or did they give you this? Does she, okay, maybe they could just say a little bit more on it. Yeah, thanks. Salt agreement for curb rampage movements. Are there a group? Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, uh, this is a consultant agreement with our direct group out of Wenatchee. They're the city's on-call transportation engineer that we selected earlier this year. And this is a professional, uh, or this is a consultant agreement with them to design the T I V curb ramp project. Uh, so as a reminder, January ninth, we accepted the the grant money from T I V for twenty eight efficient pedestrian curb ramping facilities, so this is just a contract for our direct design. They're based on all those things.
Questions? Yeah, but gain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the consultant agreement with Arda Group for the curb ramp improvements project with a not to exceed amount of forty seven thousand four hundred and eighty two dollars.
Certainly.
By Ian, said goodbye Travis. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Pass unanimously. And now supplemental agreement number three, professional service agreement from A R C, Andy.
Yeah, this is uh supplemental agreement number three for services during construction for A R C to observe document and administer the construction dates of the compact for the front street, uh, sorry, front street restroom and stairway expansion. Um, and as an update, you just heard back from the contractor today that they need to start August fifth, so construction will be starting soon. And the goal is to have A R C do all the construction admin, especially uh with Tom not here. Uh, I don't have the capacity to take on that project right now, so it will really be defer uh majority of all of that, but we're gonna and getting additional support from throughout the touch, throughout the project.
Questions? We retain the motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number three to the professional services agreement with A R C Architects for the front street restrooms and stairway expansion project, project increasing the not to exceed amount to a total of four hundred and sixty eight thousand five hundred and ninety three dollars.
Second. I guess I have a question.
Um, sure.
What uh, what was it before we increased it? What was the amount?
Um, I can subtract it. It was, so this is two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars uh for the surface structure. It's typically two hundred and thirty two thousand seven hundred and twenty four dollars.
Yeah, I see it. I see it. I see it. I guess what I'm asking is.
Is that what you're asking?
No. Um, what I'm asking is uh this is an increase over what we had with them before?
Yeah, this is an increase of that two hundred, uh, two hundred and thirty two thousand.
Yeah, of the two hundred and thirty two, okay.
Yeah.
That.
Yeah, because that didn't include the construction admin. That was.
Wow, I just have never seen a project like this, so I didn't realize that we would expend a quarter of a million dollars for an administrator.
Yeah, so typically, like, real well, fifteen percent is a reasonable amount to spend on both design and construction and that's pretty in line with this. Uh, the total, the total construction contract itself is one point nine six five million dollars, and so then based off that, this is less than fifteen percent.
Would there ever be a time when we wouldn't have a construction administrator and it would be our staff?
I think we have staff capacity. Um, but truthfully, a project like this has a team that's working on things. Like, there's whole people at A R C that will be handling some middles, documentation, inspections, all those types of things, and then they also have sub consultants, so they have all of their um, the different engineers that are subs to them. And so we're handing all of that over to them and having that, having them do that on our behalf. So unless we had more staff and a lot more availability, we will continue to have consultants manage bigger projects like this.
Huh, okay, that's interesting. I just didn't, I didn't, like I said, I wasn't aware. That's fascinating, okay.
All right, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Let me see your hands. Pass unanimously. Then the other item that we just added, you've got it before you there, is uh an authorization for closing documents to be signed. Um, and actually got a minor tweak to that as well to the motion where it says to sign closing papers. Instead of closing papers, all documents related to this transaction for the car wash property.
Same.
Um. There's just multiple documents. So rather than closing papers and identifying all right, that all done.
All documents pertaining?
Yeah, to this transaction for the car wash property purchased by the city. Now, the way to entertain a motion.
Love and War City Council. Moves to approve and authorize the mayor or city administrator. To sign all documents related to this transaction for the car wash property being purchased by the city. Which is located at fourteen fifty-one U S Highway Two. Second.
Move on, and say goodbye Shane. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. All right, council report, Sharon.
Well, I went to the mosquito control board meeting and um. There. Not a lot happening there right now. And um the other thing was, we had an incident at the pool. Last Thursday night, a fecal incident. And um.
Oh crap.
Yeah, it just happened, yeah. It just happened that. It happened about three fifty, which is right before my water broke. So all the water robies people were coming. There was a home swim meet and some of it was from Waterville and some from Wenatchee at the rap. And so all those people were coming and calling. Kelly was trying to get a hold of the public works. Guys so that she could, and and they came up. Just, you know, to take a look and see. So it was just, it was, I had to go after I went home through all, it was mad chaos. After I went home, I just had to laugh. Because I'm somebody's laughing out loud in my chair, because it was just like, when does that ever happen? When all those things are.
Our schedule.
Yeah, they're, and so that swim meet will never happen because the swim team is out the end of the month. They'll be going to championships, probably Afraid of is where they usually go. And so um a lot of bummed out people.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a uh microphone system or something so that every hour we can announce, you know. Take your little guys in and see what they can do.
Isn't it typical for the pool to be closed for that long for that type of incident?
It is. It is for that type of a fecal incident. There's one where if. I don't want to go into too much detail, but there's one where um. You can uh put some uh.
Different one.
What is it? Shock.
Yeah, shock and then have it.
Yeah, you can kind of shock it in that area and wait about thirty minutes and then you can check it and give it that a certain. Uh degree, then people can get back in. This was not one of those.
It goes by firmness. Uh anyway.
No, I have actually the same question, but it's more with the residual pages that, so we have to get it back to a stable position that we can allow people up the water. So it's not only. Uh yeah, shocking the system, but then allowing.
No, it's, it's a two-day thing.
Oh, bummer.
So it did occur during open swim and it wasn't necessarily a little one?
No, it wasn't necessarily a little one.
Oh.
And it depends upon whether whatever it is stays together when you're trying to get it out. If it doesn't, now that's the two day. Yeah. But just to happen when water rubs is coming, a swim meet that night.
Okay.
Crazy. Anyway, that's it.
That's it. And?
Uh on the sixteenth, I had a link transit board meeting. Wasn't really anything on the agenda that specifically pertained to the city of Love and Worth uh this time around. Um. But the, but Link Transit is moving forward with their. Uh award for um their new bus garage construction, which is going to be really great. It's gonna. Um actually be a fully enclosed new bus garage, which will allow them to also. Um install all of their electrics, electric bus infrastructure, which has been kind of piecemealed over time. Um and so this is going to give them a lot more advantage to. Um being able to have a controlled environment for their electric buses and charge them efficiently um. With a new kind of organized base system. With electric garage doors and all the things that they've never had before, so um. That's one fun thing moving forward with Link Transit right now. Um the. In-city shuttle has been operating since the beginning of the month. Um it does around in about twenty minutes. And hopefully, we've got a lot of community noticing it, starting to use it, because it will definitely help people get from parking areas to the downtown and vice versa.
Have they said how the.
Shuttle, the shuttle is back. Start using it. It's free.
Have they said how the numbers are? Do they know or?
Um, I haven't seen numbers yet because they report those on a monthly basis and we haven't had it for a whole month yet.
I wrote it the other day to go to welcome and and it was.
Nice, good.
Good. That is fantastic. I love it.
Cool.
Yeah.
Good. I was wondering if something should, announcements should go to the chamber to send out to the. Um businesses so that they can let their constituents know that there's.
And their employees to use the shuttle.
And their employees, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be great because it's going to connect with our uh our new Glacier Lot when it's done too. Whole new bark, bus pullout and shelter and everything.
That's awesome.
That's all of that.
All right.
Uh last Thursday, I attended the finance uh committee meeting with Chantel. It was just. Her and I, we went over uh the city's debt schedule and debt capacity and uh. Yeah, I learned a lot about those two uh two topics. And then over the weekend, I volunteered to do some door knocking for the pool, let me. Just the end of my report.
Some of those signs out there, it's good to see. Oh no.
Speaking of door knocking, a secret Santa deposited the sign I requested on my lawn for the pool. Actually, did I, did you, I have, I think I requested it from you. Did you drop it off?
Am I allowed to say yes?
Is this political?
Oh.
It's not really.
No, because we, the city owns and operates.
Right. You did? Okay, well, thanks for that. Thanks for that.
Right.
And um anyway, I have that sign and then, let's see, I got COVID. Yeah, oh, I thought you all got a letter about that. You didn't? Oh, that's why I didn't show up to staff.
Oh, oh, no, I didn't.
Oh, huh, okay.
You mailed us a letter?
No, I asked somebody to do it. I guess it didn't happen. But anyway, so um I tested positive and. On like Wednesday, which is why I didn't attend the meeting. So anyway, um. And it's already gone. So I lucked out there. Second time is easier. I just want to say that. Um. And so I have not been very engaged in things. Uh we did get a letter from a resident group on. Pine grass. I think everyone in the council caught that letter. And I just wanted to bring it up because it's a resident, it was a group of residents that are reaching out and saying, you know. We, we would like to get attention about this. And I don't know how we typically handle that. As as a group in here, but I'll mention it just because um, you know, I I want to. I want to give a shout out to someone that took the time to write in to in that detail.
Agreeing that up because I was like, same thing.
Yeah, in that detail. So how do, is that something that like we get on a future?
I can uh talk about it when I get my presentation.
Oh, okay.
I'll give you an update.
Okay.
Get your report.
That's it.
All right.
I'd go back.
Uh, that's my report. I'm sorry, no, no, that's awful.
Shane and I um visited the water treatment.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. I was leaving it for you.
I forgot what I even talked about. It was so, oh, it's such a cool, I urge everyone.
It is a cool.
Community people, yeah, should should visit it and um. They love giving the tours and those guys are great. Um. And uh it's, it's really cool to see in the, in the icicle, the. The aqueduct that goes to agriculture section that doesn't even come into Lemonworth. I mean, it's just like these waters that we share. With with the agriculture. It's, I didn't really realize the extent of that. Um. And so uh it was really, really cool. It's cool to see, cool, cool to listen to them actually and some of the needs that that maybe they have and some. Uh the, how many people? Three total to run all of our water. They're kind of all on call one time or another throughout the night. In the winter, things happen. I mean, it's really cool to see. It's one of those things that we take for, for granted at some basic level, right? Then is it gone? Neck water comes out, you drank it, it tastes amazing. There's people behind that and it's, it's really cool. It's really cool. And they, it's, it's like our parking department. They care a lot about parking. These guys care a lot about our, our city. It's really, it's really, so.
What, yeah, I mean, what amazed me is how clean our water is, like compared to, you know, the state standards. You know, or the water that comes in. Untreated, you know, is, you know, meets the standards. Like, and then after we treat it, how clean it is, how, how below the, the state standard. Yeah, it just, it blew my mind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh and then I attended, just as a citizen, the downtown serving committee today and so I think that committee can speak more to that. That's it. That's it. As I mentioned, I had met with uh. Representative Steele on Monday and just talked about some legislative issues. Of course, funding stream being. An ongoing one, but but there's some other things related to housing. Um and that he's, that he and we see eye to eye and are going to try to work on. And one is um. Currently, you take money from the state, you pay prevailing wage. We want to get an exemption for affordable housing because if you're paying. An already exorbitant price to do housing and you have to pay the prevailing wage on top. You take a big chunk of what the state's giving you to help you make them affordable. It works against it's itself. So anyway, there's um, there's. A push to get uh housing out of that. Um dilemma, I guess. Um the other thing we talked about, there's some other things that we talked about. One is the A M I issue that makes it more difficult for east side. To to deal with housing. Qualifying folks at eighty percent A M I. We've got a much lower A M I than eighty percent in Seattle, even though our housing costs are similar. So there's. And actually commerce is uh is open to looking at other ways to determine and maybe get something that deals with. Housing prices versus in wages and incomes and things to deal with. Um. That versus a strict A M I, area median income. But anyway, that's another thing to work on. Um and I also brought up something that um that we had discovered when Will had the idea of vacating a, a road. That, that then we could use for housing. And this affects, you know, when we talked about doing that for the. The um church that instead of vacating it and giving it to them is using it for housing. Well, there's state law that precludes us from doing that. If you vacate, you have to offer it. To adjoining property owners versus being able to to use it. So I just raised that with Representative Steele as one small thing that we could do is just change the law to say. Hey, you can use it, you know, use it for something else versus having to. Give it back to the property.
Lots here in Love and Worth that we could do.
So there is several, yeah, I mean, you know, it, it all adds up, right, to in, creating infill lots and versus. So he, yeah, he uh he was open to working on that with us too. So. There's some other things that, um even though we don't see eye to eye on all things, there are some things we can uh work together on. Um and that's uh, and then I'll just have to say that. This being Willis' last council meeting, that I have to um. Say how much I appreciated you and your work here and your love of this city and your commitment to it and. Helping me with housing. Um and I really um have appreciated that partnership. And we'll miss. So, but I, I'm sure we'll run across it too. Yes. And that's mine. Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. A very short report. I was um on vacation for the last week, so. Uh but I have received uh about ten applications for public works director position. I'll review those this week and reach out to folks. Um to do a first round of interviews, to to do a shortlist and we'll do a more extensive um. Uh longer interview process for a final three or so um later on in August. Um I have started accepting of the Willis backfill is is posted, starting to accept applications for that as well. Uh negotiations with the union begin on August sixth, so. Uh we'll be giving you periodic updates uh throughout those negotiations. We do have to get them wrapped up by the end of the year so that we can adopt the budget. And Will, thank you very much for your dedicated service to the city. It's been a pleasure working with you. We've missed. Thank you so much. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So I have a question for the council tonight. Uh our auditors are, of course, underway. And the annual process is to have what's called an entrance interview. Where they will just generally go over what the process is about. They may not know any details. At this point, I'm not even certain if they know specifically what they're going to be looking at as sampling. Um I do know that. Underneath that table over there is their first priority, which is our bank recs. And the U S D A R D grant, those are definitely the high priorities. But the entrance interview, do you want to participate in it or do you want to just? Uh participate in the exit conference that happens at the end and then go into more detail of. What they did, what they found.
Hmm.
It's, it's been hit and miss, but if you want to participate, I can either schedule it. With your upcoming evening meeting, because all your study sessions are already packed. Or I can possibly do a special meeting, or if you guys are okay with not doing the entrance. Uh they'll just meet with Selby and the mayor and myself.
Our information, right? We're not adding value or input or guiding them in any way. So I feel, I feel like an exit is more appropriate for a council. Personally.
And what I can do is I can give you the entrance document.
Yeah, brief us, yeah.
That's the route. Otherwise, I have to take into account a quote.
Right.
And do we need to do it in a special meeting or do you? The entrance, Sharon, you've done it time and again.
Usually, yeah.
The exit's more important. Okay. So is that okay with everyone? We'll just do the entrance with staff and then we'll do the exit when they're done.
I'm okay with that.
Wonderful. Okay. Uh well. In your packet tonight, under tab five was a um semi-annual transportation benefit district report. So that's all in there to tell you where your dollars have been spent. And then under tab eleven is your finance report. Is there any questions for those items? Well, I'm going to take vacation now that Selby and there are. And and I will be taking off through all of next week as I delve deeper into the budget and finishing the audit. Through the rest of August and. I told Will I took her out to lunch yesterday and I've been avoiding her all day today because I don't want to cry, so I can't even look at her.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. It has been a delight working for this great community. Um don't always agree on everything and that is really great. You gotta embrace it and I'm. I'm really um delighted to have had the experience to work through so many housing issues. Uh certainly laid the foundation for the next job, which is infill manager for Department of Commerce Housing Division. So. I'll be working with a really nice team of folks there and I'm trying to implement more housing across the state. So that's, that'll be fun. It'll also provide me time to. Uh have lunch with my husband or just hang out and not commute. So there's a lot of advantages. The disadvantages, this is a great team and it's a really great community. So you've got a lot of work ahead of you and you've got a, a good team moving forward, so. Delighted to hand it off to Maggie. I hope it works out for her to take the reign if she, if she's able to do that and wants to do that. She'll do a fabulous job. I have been telling her, and she might still be online, yes. That every director brings something new to the table, particularly in this position. My background, my. Uh innate ability to look at long-range planning was just something I do. Um and code writing, her ability is current planning. Bringing people together, communication style. She has so many strengths. Um but know that the reports are going to be different. The presentation's different, the communication's different. And I hope you all embrace that, uh use that. Tomorrow is our condo workshop at the Fest Hall, and so we have some handouts. We have some realtors coming. Um it shouldn't be a long meeting, but we'll touch on the big component items and. I think having the realtors there will be a nice opportunity to ask questions related to the value. That condos could potentially bring to the community.
Still have two realtors and two appraisers?
Um well, yes. So uh Sherri Farivar, is there? And Simon, her son, I think does some reality work. Maybe I'm wrong there. And then Cam is the only realtor who has, so that they will be in attendance. I just got that notice today. So
Thanks, Will.
Pretty excited about that.
Yeah, it'll be good to have them there. Thank you.
Is it, what's the format? In attendee, you're saying, you're saying in attendance? Are they speaking? Is this open mic? Is this a stage? They're, they're on the stage?
I do, I don't want to use the stage. Uh, it's set up for a hundred chairs, so it's going to be more than we need. I also asked for four round tables. Because it might be easier for people just to sit in a discussion format. So we'll have options once we're there, depending on how many people show up. And it was my intention just to do an introduction, go over the handouts that I have available. And then turn it over to question and answers with the realtor and appraisers. So that, that's my intent right now. Certainly flexible as a workshop. So think of the questions you have. If you can write them down ahead of time, if they're complex, we can always send them off to Cam and like the, the rest of team for review. So keep that in mind. Everything else has been kind of lined out and hopefully it transitions smoothly. I'm available if there's more questions and I look forward to visiting.
You may have.
Did, did you want to mention, well, two things. One, are you moving to Olympia?
No, it's a remote job. I get to work.
Ah, oh, that's good. I mean, I mean, not that Olympia's bad, but I was like, wow, that is an enormous change.
No, no.
Oh yeah, that's, yeah, that's nice. Um, and then the other thing is um, what did happen with the pine grass thing?
Oh, yes, thank you. I knew it was staring me right in the face. I was like, there was one other thing. Uh, yeah, I have uh Stacy Hurd's email here. And of course, we had heard from her and others in the pine grass area about a variety of complaints that have come in. Uh, it's important to know that some of the complaints included, you know, for example, they said, well, I submitted so many complaints. Well, it came on one form, but it covered three days. We, we look at that as one complaint because it just came to us. Uh, these complaints cover multiple projects too. And so that's another challenge we're having in that area. We have a builder who is at their final point next, next violation for them will be a fine. And then Jordan McDevitt's project where he's actually putting in the new infrastructure in the road. His contractors have been out of compliance enough times that he's gotten his final letter and next would be a fine. Uh, we have another developer in that area who's, you know, been warned. The other thing to keep in mind is some of these complaints cover different things. We had, you know, I think it was Lowe's dropping off doing a drop and they got there before seven A M. You know, yeah. You should request not to have a morning drop, but you know, I think most developers assume if they're requesting a morning drop, it's not going to be there at six forty-five in the morning, especially from Wenatchee. That's an awful early start, but you know. I think some of the complaints also were related with subcontractors. So we have the developer or property owner, contractor, subcontractor. Were anticipating the hundred and ten day and so they wanted to start early. So they got there and started early. So our, my approach of my team has always been to talk to the contractors and property owners as much as you can and film and what are there different types of complaints? I can't see denying them for each different type of complaint, you know? Now they know, don't have any morning drops unless you specify it's after a certain time of the day that they can make the drop. And so if they have that complaint again, then to me that's uh, it's a fine line. Just trying to thread that needle between keeping their project going, keeping the expectations in the neighborhood, understanding what was a reasonable mistake versus an intentional error violation. And we do have a developer who is making intentional violations. So um like I said, that one's at the middle of the trouble when um so anyway, that's what we've been doing. I did ask Amy to put together a list of all the complaints that come in, what they were related to and how they've been handled. So maybe you can process that and send it on to you as a group. But just know that it's a little bit broader than what's being proposed here. And there's a lot of little details too, so.
Well, thanks for explaining that.
Yeah. And if you have more questions, like I said, the information's there. We're trying to categorize it, but feel free to reach out too.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, um really quickly, we selected Selmas for the Front Street Pesture and Plaza project. Um, we'll be moving forward with the contractual service agreement with them. Um, we did complete the dust abatement treatment at the Eastland Largo Launch and that water park over the last couple of weeks. So hopefully you've noticed that our dust is less of an issue right now. Um, I did want to mention that Shalane Beblis Transportation Council is working on their regional pathways plan. Um, and one of the sections that they're looking at is from Wenatchee to Levanor. And so they just pushed out some public notification on that today, which is exciting. I think we'll carry on that so she can share that with the public. Uh, but the last meeting I attended on that was uh preliminary alignment that they were looking at. So just looking at how we would physically connect from Levanor um all the way to Wenatchee. Um, and then I guess just my last item is thank you, Will. We have had a really awesome uh close working relationship and obviously public works and community development have a lot of overlap and quite a gray area. So um it's been really fun to get to go through all these projects with you. So thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On uh, what is it? On tab three, where it's listed, um, the public, uh, not public works, public caring. There's somebody whose name and address isn't there. I'm wondering why there, what they said was there.
There, it was inaudible. I couldn't understand what her name was.
Okay.
Didn't come through on the recording.
Yeah, it didn't come through on the recording and I didn't get it.
Okay, so if you don't know who it is, their information they say still goes in.
Yeah, she still made a comment. I just didn't know what her name was. But she gave her address. So I, and I tried to look it up on the assessor's site and uh she's renting, so I don't know who that.
Okay, it just concerned me.
Yeah, no, no concern.
Okay. Well, look, you're the best. I was on the, the uh team that did the hiring. And um so it's, it's been fun. You've had a tough job, tough job.
You've spent enough time with her too, haven't you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. She's helped me through a lot of things I don't understand. And so you're definitely going to be missed. And I, my, I'm, it's exciting for me that you'll be there with your husband and be able to yeah, that's the best.
Alright, we are now move, ready to move into an executive session. I would ask for a motion to recess from the executive session for fifteen minutes under R C W four two thirty, one ten, one um legal ramifications of, of course, misconduct and no action will be taken.
So not.
Second.
Who by Ann, second. By Shane, all in favor? Let me see. Who by Will, recess. Fifteen minutes. Look out, recording. Hey, we're out of executive session. There's no public members here. We would like to go back into executive session. Somebody want to make a motion for the same issue or however many minutes you guys want. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we go back into executive session for seven minutes, which will put it, say, eight twenty.
Seven minutes to eight twenty. All those in favor? Unanimous. Stop recording and we will We are coming out of executive session, so.
I moved to adjourn.
Wait, are we recording? Oh, okay. Who do jerk?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? We are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom.